Good evening. It is Monday, December 10th, 2018. I call the first meeting of December to order. My name is Jeff Matthews. I am president of the Speedway Town Council. I'd like to welcome the others that are joining me here this evening. First, Councillor Eileen Fisher.
Good evening.
Vice President David Lindsey.
Good evening.
Councillor Gary Rakes.
Good evening.
Town Manager Jacob Blaisdell.
Good evening.
Clerk Treasurer Monty Combs.
Good evening.
And our Town Attorney Bob Clutter.
Good evening.
The agenda has been posted, of which we will be following this evening. First on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number two is the approval of the Town Council minutes dated November 12th, 2018. Those have been distributed. Any adjustments or corrections? Hearing none, those will be approved as presented. Item number three is the approval of the 2019 Town of Speedway Designated Holiday Calendar. I'd like to thank our Clerk Treasurer Monty Combs for his assistance putting this together. Basically, it's a calendar stating every holiday that the town will be observing this year.
Thanks, Monty.
New motion?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the 2019 Town Designated Holiday Calendar as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the 2019 Speedway Designated Holiday Calendar. Are there any questions from the audience? Any from council? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes four zero. Item number four, appointments to the Speedway Boards and Commissions. So this evening we have a few that we would like to get filled. First, we'd like to start with the Housing Advisory Council. Do we have any nominations?
Mr. President, I move that we approve, renominate Charlie Myers.
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Mike Hitch.
Mr. President, I make a motion we close nominations.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to close nominations for our Housing Advisory Council. Any questions from the audience? Any from council?
No question, just to make a point. This council used to have more people than it's had this past year, and I think we have the opportunity to add a couple more, even beyond what we've nominated this evening if we approve both of them. But I just want to make a point that even though we've had five in this past year, we're looking to, I think it makes sense for us to expand that out, as housing's a big need for us to continue improving.
Any other comments? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes four zero. I'd like to thank Charles, he's here in the audience. Thank you for re-upping, appreciate it. And thank you to Mike Hitch as well. Next up, Parks Board.
Good. I insist.
Okay. Mr. President, I nominate Trent Theibel for position on the Parks Board.
I move we close Parks positions.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to close Parks Board nominations. Any questions from the audience? Counsel? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes four zero. Thank you, Trent. Public Transportation Board.
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Bev Katter-Henry.
I'd like to nominate Joe O'Neill.
I move that we close nominations for Transportation Board.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to close nominations for the Public Transportation Board. Any questions from the audience? Counsel? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Passes four zero. Thank you, Bev, and thank you, Joe. Joe's been, I think Joe's been on Transportation Board since there's been transportation, so thank you for your long, thank you for your service.
That's a long time.
Been a long time.
That's a long time.
I know, Joe, I can do that. Next up, Redevelopment Commission.
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Rhonda Schwartz.
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Tom Popchif.
I move we close nominations for Redevelopment.
Second.
Before we close, I would like to, I've got two appointments.
We should vote on the council appointments.
Okay.
Yours is appointed.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to close those nominations for Redevelopment Commission. Any questions from the audience? Counsel? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Four zero. Now, I would like to reappoint Brody Duncan and Gordon Rundle to the Redevelopment Commission. Moving right along, Library Board.
I would nominate Bernie Sinkowski.
Make a motion nominations are closed.
It's been moved and seconded to close nominations for Library Board. Any questions from the audience? Any from council? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Passes four zero. Next up, the Fire Merit Board.
Mr. President, I'd like to re-up Tom Deal.
Make a motion nominations are closed for the Fire Merit Board.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to close nominations for the Fire Merit Board. Any questions, comments from the audience? Counsel? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Passes four zero. Next, Police Commission.
Mr. President, I make a motion we reappoint Ed Breen to the Police Commission.
I move we close nominations for Police Commission.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to close nominations for the Police Commission. Any comments from the audience? Any from council? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Passes four zero. Thank you, Mr. Breen, for your service. And Speedway Redevelopment Authority.
That's downtown.
City County Council points that.
Yeah, I believe the City County Council appoints that position, Mr. President.
Last name corrected. Okay. Is that everything?
School Board.
School Board.
Where did I miss? School Board, thank you.
Mr. President, I nominate Deborah Gonzalez.
Mr. President, I nominate Luke Bickle.
And I propose that we close nominations.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the nominations for the School Board. Any questions or comments from the audience? Counsel? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Passes four zero.
One more.
And not, last but not least, the Speedway Redevelopment Authority.
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate William Grabman.
I move we close nominations for Speedway Redevelopment Authority.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to close nominations for the Speedway Redevelopment Authority. Any questions from the audience? Any from council? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Passes four zero.
Mr. President, I can make a quick comment.
Please.
There are some boards and commissions that we do not appoint tonight. There's, we went through a lot. We have a lot to do. We're not done. We have another meeting at the end of the month and then the beginning of January, so there's going to be more, just so the public is aware. But we did a lot of work there in a short amount of time.
Did.
Very good job, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to add to that, that every year we have seemingly more and more people interested to serve, and virtually the same number of positions available accounted between those serving and those interested, nearly 100 people that want to serve in a lot less number of positions than that. So with that, very much appreciate residents, businesspeople, others' interest in serving. Without that core group of boards, board and commission members, the town would not function anywhere close to as well as it does. So it's very much appreciated.
Thank you. Item number five, approval of an agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 86 representing officers of the Speedway Police Department. Jacob.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So myself and two councillors have held several meetings with representatives from the Police Department, representing specifically the Fraternal Police. Happy to say that we have reached terms for a three-year contract with the Police Department and the officers, and has been approved by the terms that they operate under with a vote, and it is now in front of you, the council, to approve.
Mr. President, I would move that we approve the agreement with Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 86 that represent our officers here in the Speedway Police Department.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 86 representing our officers of the Speedway Police Department. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Any from council? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I will abstain. For the public's information, I'm a member of Lodge 86. That's why I'm not going to vote on this time.
Thank you, Dave. Passes three with one abstention. Item number six, approval of an agreement with the Speedway Professional Firefighters Association Local 416. Jacob.
Thank you, Mr. President. Similar process with the firefighters in Speedway and their union, and the Contract Committee have met with them, along with a couple of councillors, and we have reached a three-year agreement with them as well, and would ask for your approval on the firefighters' agreement.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the agreement with Speedway Professional Firefighters Association Local 416.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agreement with the Speedway Professional Firefighters Association Local 416. Any comments from the audience? Any from council? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Passes four zero. Item number seven is the approval of an agreement with Lisa Schmitz for on-call HR consulting services. Jacob, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Several years ago, or two years ago specifically, some surveys were done and conducted with town employees. It kind of lingered as there was a transition in town manager. We've been taking a look at those surveys, and are now getting assistance from Lisa to take a look at these surveys and do some interviews to really get the value and use out of that investment in that process, both in terms of money and time from our employees. So Lisa's an HR professional, and now does consulting work, and would ask for your approval for an on-call services agreement with her.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the agreement with Lisa Schmitz as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agreement with Lisa Schmitz for on-call HR consulting services. Any questions or comments from the audience? Any additional from council? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Approval passes four zero. Item number eight is Resolution 2018-12, a resolution authorizing the use of Environmental Liability Insurance Fund. I'd like to have Tim Gropp come up, please.
Good evening, council. A little background on this resolution. Previous, I think it was 2012, if I'm not mistaken, there was some property that was acquired at the corner of 10th and Polco Street by the Redevelopment Commission for a road project for the town. Subsequently, when that project got underway, there were some environmental, some major environmental issues that were discovered in that area, and that project had to cease. A big portion of this project, this area, it's about six acres, the 10th and Polco, Allison Way, is owned by Prax Air. Once that was uncovered, an IDEM was brought into the mix. Since the minute we've basically walked in, Jacob and I, we've been working on coming to a resolution of how to clean up that area. The reality is, it's going to stay non-developed. The good news is, we've finally come to an agreement based on percentage of who owns what in that area to clean it up. I believe we have a map that might come up on the screen here that kind of shows, we own about 19.2% of the cleanup area. Prax Air owns the rest. So we've come to a conclusion based on recommendations from consultants, and lawyers coming together to come to a settlement agreement on how to best clean this up. The good news was, the testing wasn't as bad as we originally, we weren't sure if this was going to be a $200,000 problem or a multimillion dollar problem. Good news is, we're able to basically do a cover, cut down all the brush, smooth the hill down, make it a little more presentable, grassy area, and then fence it in with a nice fence, and basically be good moving forward. That's kind of a best-case scenario from a finance side. It's not necessarily ideal for, we'd love to see something actually happen on that site, but in general, it's an acceptable solution. It's been a long time coming trying to come to this conclusion. So the Redevelopment Commission, as the owner of those parcels, has signed off on this settlement agreement, which basically states, we're paying, the original was, we'd split it to about, based on the estimated costs, we'd have about a $200,000 bill. We went back, we didn't really love how it was going to look at the end, so we said, look, what if we cut that in half? But we put the decorative fence around there to make it look a little nicer. I mean, that's the headquarters, world headquarters for Allison, everything we've done on Main Street. So they said, okay. So in general, we're going to owe about $200,000, $230,000, whatever that final cost is. All this now, now that we've come to an agreement on how we're going to handle this, this will now go to IDEM and for their final stamp of approval, say, yes, we're okay with how this is all going to end up. So with that said, we've identified, there was a fund that Monty had found that was set aside back when insurance companies didn't really handle insurance claims for environmental that has been sitting there for quite some time dormant. We'd like to use those funds to help, to cover our costs for the town's portion of this cleanup effort, which, again, I believe that fund would more than adequately cover this expense, which is truly an environmental cleanup situation. Be happy to answer any questions on this. That is the very short version of this.
Tim, we talked kind of one-on-one about this, but you covered the number a moment ago, but, you know, we're looking at, you know, $200,000 to $300,000 here, but you might repeat the number that you were really concerned about early on.
Yeah, so the estimate, the other nice thing about the settlement is, we're indemnified moving forward. This is a one-time payment. It won't come back to us. Once we pay this out and do our portion with the fence, we're done, which is great. The estimate on this method is about $1 million, but if we were going to have to get into digging out and taking waste up to Michigan and everything else, I mean, it could have been multimillion-dollar cleanup in this area. So when the testing came back for everything, it seemed like we were going to be able to cover this, and basically, in a best-case scenario, we're not going to have to dig a big hole and take everything out and replace it. We're going to be able to kind of smooth this hill out, take all the brush will go away, and then keep it maintained moving forward. So we're not excited about that by any means, but it is, is about a best, being involved in the project, which is unfortunate in the first place. This is about as good as we can come out of it. And it will clean up that area.
This may be a better question for Jacob and Monty, but, so this fund, is it a cumulative fund? We're accumulating dollars every year in this fund? And then what's the balance of the fund today? Cover the...
The balance is $431,000, and it's, that's been stable for the next number of years. I've gone back to, I think, 2012, I believe, and nothing, it's not grown, it's not been paid, it's sitting there. And then talking with the State Board of Accounts, the reasons they had that back in the 90s when they established it, but they said, nothing's been done for the last four to five years, and the council can decide what direction they'll go with the money.
So what's the approximate amount again?
Depending on what the final fence number is, somewhere in the $200,000 to $230,000. We've gotten some quotes on fencing, but we have to sit down and come to an agreement on that, but I would say the high amount would be $230,000.
So, and this was just cleaning up our portion that we owned along that section?
So this will clean up the entire, you can't really do this in sections. You have to take everything down, and then there's a grade that has to be put out, and then we'll fence the entire thing. So this is a, this is a settlement agreement. We're basically paying approximately 19.2% of the cost, which is, it's been surveyed, it's been outlined, and that is approximately what we own. We actually own a parcel, and then we had a parcel that was set aside, 5A, that was a construction easement that we're required to actually clean up as well. So our total amount that we're responsible for in the overall project is 19.2%, which is approximately $200,000 of the estimated cost. It could be more than that, you know, when everything comes back from IDEM, so this is locking us in at that number. This will be our number.
Ready for a motion? Mr. President, I move that we approve Resolution 2018-12 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2018-12. Any questions from the audience? Charlie, you want to come up, please come up to the podium, state your name and address, please.
My name's Charlie Myers. I live at 2728 Hickory Wood Court. The only question I have, who did we buy the property from, and has there been any sort of attempt at recovery from the seller of the property who dumped this liability in the lap of the town?
Sure. The property at the time was purchased from Prax Air Surface Technologies, and that purchase had a very strong indemnity clause on it.
And we needed that to redo that intersection, is that correct?
At the time, I believe, yes, it was to straighten out Polco Street into 10th Street. It was all part of the, I believe, 100th anniversary celebration, fixing up 10th Street and everything. So, yeah, it's, again, it's unfortunate. This settlement agreement indemnifies us from any further action.
Thank you, Charles. Anything else? Audience? Any from council? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes four zero. Item number nine, Ordinance 1313, an ordinance establishing jobs and salaries to be paid to certain offices, positions, and jobs within the Town of Speedway for the year 2019. This is first reading. Jacob.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we do every year, we will request the passage of an ordinance that outlines salaries and compensation inclusive of different incentives for licenses and requirements for employment. This ordinance outlines the language as well as the various monetary, the various monetary salaries, and as part of the exhibit, I would ask for your approval of the ordinance and exhibit as presented, inclusive of any changes or adjustments that we've discussed.
Mr. President, I move that we approve Ordinance 1313, first reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Ordinance 1313 on first reading. Any questions from the audience? Any from council? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Passes four zero. Item number 10, approval of claims and utility adjustments, and our Clerk Treasurer's report. Monty, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. President. The claims you had before you extended time since we didn't have one in late November, but November 10th through December the 7th is the timeframe for the claims you had before you, and we'd appreciate your approval.
Mr. President, I make a motion we approve the claims as presented by our Clerk Treasurer.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the claims as presented by our Clerk Treasurer. Any questions from the audience? Any from council? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Passes four zero. Utility adjustments, Monty.
Yes, same period of time for the adjustments, from November 10th through December 7th. As you can see, it was $264.76. 97% of that was actually just a simple meter reader, read, misread, if you will. So those are the adjustments for this period, and appreciate your approval there as well.
Mr. President, I move we approve the adjustments presented by Clerk Treasurer.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the utility adjustments as presented. Are there any questions from the audience? Any from council? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Passes four zero. Monty?
Just a happy anniversary to my wife. This is 30 years today, and I'm here instead of with her, so I'm, something's wrong here.
All right, happy anniversary.
Thank you.
Reports from our department supervisors. First up, Tim Gropp, Economic Development.
Couple, couple updates here. One, I just want to make sure everybody knows, the Speedway Redevelopment Commission meeting is next Monday at 5:30. We moved it up a week due to the holiday, otherwise it would have been on Christmas Eve, and I think attendance would have been pretty low. So December 17th, 5:30 in this hall, will be the last Redevelopment Commission meeting of 2018. The other update I want to give is on 1300 Block. I just want to clarify a few items, and I actually have a few visuals for the council. So as you may have noticed, things have changed a little bit in the 1300 Block. This has been talked about for most of 2018, but it always still comes as a shock to some as, as it finally comes to be a reality. A couple quick clarifications. One is, the Redevelopment Commission actually did demo on what was the former Art Center and then the Storage Building. We did not own the Ted's Beauty Shop. That was taken down while they used, at the same time as ours, they, there was savings by utilizing everybody on site at the same time, but, so the next step in that, part of the reason we took that down, was there's some, the Art Center building was a former dry cleaner, and there's some cleanup that needs to be done on site. So where that currently stands right now is, there's, the Redevelopment Commission's not part of that. That was all done through insurance from the previous owners. So IDEM and Wilcox, who's representing the building, are working with the insurance agent to come to a final cleanup understanding. There's a little disagreement about what method should be applied, federal versus state. So IDEM and Wilcox are going back and forth, and the insurance has basically said, here's the money, you guys figure it out. So we're hoping that comes to a conclusion really soon, and that there will be another mobilization out there where they'll actually, our preferred method is that they'll actually extract the soil that is contaminated in that area. It's chemicals from the old dry cleaning area. It's not anything, those aren't great, but they're not the worst thing that could be in there either. But, so they're working through that. If that, if IDEM doesn't accept that, then it'll be an injection area, and then any future redevelopment would have to have vapor barriers and some other items associated to it. So a lot of that area is actually under, underneath some of the current pavement, so there'll probably be some additional demolition in there. We'll just keep everyone posted as we hear more. We're hoping that it would line up, that it'd be demo, everyone would be on site, and they'd be able to remediate. they'd be able to remediate immediately. Unfortunately, there's some disagreement between the insurance and IDEM at this time. So we still hope that that remediation plan gets underway in the next month. From that point, earlier in the year, we had hired Access Architecture to do some renderings along with the developer that owns the other properties. None of this includes the clock shop, just to be clear, just to see what's possible on that site, knowing that we're going to have to make some changes there. What would it be able to park itself? What would look right on that site based on the speed zone two? So this before you is by no means what's going to be built there anytime soon, but is a concept. We like this concept. We wouldn't be opposed to this, maybe with some tweaks, but would you be aware that we are thinking about it? We are looking at ways we can incorporate some of the history of that block into the design of the future. We want to make sure that we that it parks itself so we don't run into those issues as well. So we are thinking about that. We have some concepts and we showed this at the SRC meeting last month and we did receive even today some really good feedback about some details that could be incorporated in this. So we're open to suggestions. Again, as we we have no agreement in place to redevelop it, but we are thinking about it, we are talking about it. We have RFP'd the land for redevelopment. We received no offer, so we'll be negotiating down the road. We hope once all the cleanup's done, we're kind of giving the thumbs up to move forward, that we will hopefully be doing something here in 2019.
So just want to unpack one piece in there. You described parking.
Yes.
So what are your whether it's this or something like this or what what's our standard going to be as it relates to parking requirements?
Yeah, so it some of that depends on what the uses will be in the facility, but we we looked at it as I can't remember now off the top of my head, but it was five to one or or I don't think we went six to one on there, but I don't know if we can bring that back up of the layout, but we wanted to make sure that there was enough parking on site or around the building for both turnover and then permanent in case this has condos in it or office. We're really trying to push not to have additional restaurants. We'd like to see more people utilizing what we already have on Main Street and I think there's enough demand for office and retail and services in this area. But again, this is still fluid at this point. We're working on the next step. But as you can see, yeah, what we are trying to go for here is building on speed zone two standards. How much building could we get that would also allow it to park both on site and behind similar to what we're looking for in the rest of Main Street?
Thank you.
Did that answer what you were looking for?
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions for Tim? Is that it?
That'll do.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up, Police Chief Jim Campbell.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to congratulate your selection for the Parks Board. I think Trent Thielbold was an excellent choice by the council. And then secondly, what I want to do is recognize Trent. Trent just announced, and I know the council's aware of it, but after 20 years of service with Speedway Police Department, Trent's retiring and he's going to Ben Davis, Area 31. He'll still be involved with teaching younger folks public safety. So, you know, we obviously wish him the best. This Friday from 1:00 to 3:00 in in the council chambers, you know, it's kind of an open house for, you know, Trent and those who want to stop in and wish him well. So we just want to thank Trent for his service. Just to give you some idea, tomorrow we're having lunch with the Indiana Department of Homeland Security to talk about the Indianapolis 500. I think I bring that up only to say, you know, that's almost gotten to be a year-round activity, you know, that we participate in. The next one is tis the season, you know, this time of year, I encourage people to, you know, beware of those who would deprive them of their shopping or their home valuables. You know, not going to go through the whole laundry list, but, you know, it is a time of year that people take advantage in bad ways, so I encourage everyone to be mindful of that. Then lastly, since we won't hopefully be at the next meeting, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions? Thank you, Chief. Same to you. Next up, Fire Chief Bob Fishburne.
Thank you, council. I will be brief. First of all, congratulations, Monty, on 30 years. Secondly, what are you doing here? And third, why didn't Betsy come with you if she wanted to? No, I just want to echo what Chief Campbell said, and that is Merry Christmas to you guys. We won't be here for the second meeting of the month and as much as we would love to do that, just want to thank all of you. Thank all of you for your service this year and that's really all I have. I don't I don't have anything. If you guys have questions, I'm glad to answer them. Appreciate the contract committee. Know that was a process and Jason and Dave and Jacob, you know, thank you guys for the work on that with that. That's all.
Thank you, Chief. Public Works Director Wendell Walters.
Good evening, council. Some updates on your utility departments. Been busy a couple weeks. On your water department, we're working on replacing out of service hydrants that they found during their flushing test. We had a total of six were out of service. We have two repaired in the last week, so our attempt is to get these done in the next couple of weeks and get everything back in service. The staff is working on the preps for the wells, plant operation, general winter maintenance. They go through a check on the well system once a week, make sure heaters are on, everything is working correctly and stuff. Lighting project for the plant, they have got started. They've got most of their conduit and stuff run. Their fixtures were delivered to their shop today, so they have started assembling those. By the 17th, they will start installation. Hopefully by end of year, we're completed with that project. And just a reminder, this is an SRF-funded project that we put that money to work. Security upgrades at the plant have been completed. We now have the cameras and the security gates, electronic gates. So we got those accomplished this year in the last couple of months. Also want to compliment Mary on working with the group to help our staff get their certifications. It's an ongoing process. Me and Jacob's had discussions with the staff and stuff that there is a true need and we're going to help and push and everything else that we can to get these people certified. So to help us and it'll really help them out, too. Moving to your wastewater, we gave the task order to Commonwealth to get the phosphorus removal program going. This is an engineering study that will identify where we can house the equipment, how we're going to do it, and then we'll go out to quotes or bids afterwards for that product that we have to treat everything with. The fine screens, I know you folks are probably getting tired of hearing about this, but we've got engineers looking at it and we should get that review back this week and then we'll go to a quote system. It's under the allotted dollars, Bob, and get that out and hopefully by spring we'll have that project going and a couple of months later have it completed. Norm's working on some upgrades with his IT system. Our IT people's identified some servers that need to be upgraded and some other things, so he is working to get that done. Hopefully a month or so we'll have that completed down there, too. On your street department, with the winter weather that we've been having, we haven't had that large amounts of snow, but we've had the freezing rain, freezing fog and everything else going on. So the guys have been working overtime, different events, and so far we've used about 70 tons of salt putting down on our streets and stuff. We still have probably 300 in storage and then we have our 2019 contract of 400 tons, so it's going to be a mild winter and we'll store some more salt for next year. Just Rob's got the guys doing some sidewalk repair and replacement up on 30th Street. He is trying to walk through areas and find the worst and the weather has been working with us a little bit so far. So Wednesday we will pour back some that he's crews have got tore out. So it's work in progress, weather all dependent. Just a quick reminder, yard waste will end this week. Solid Waste Calendar will be posted by the 15th of this month and on their side, the general maintenance continues winter work and fall work. Excuse me. On the public works side, our bid opening is Wednesday for our left turn lane. Hopefully we get a good contractor and get that going. This project will start March and then May 1st of 2019, so that should be coming about and once we get that, we'll share back with you.
Where is that turn lane? I know.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's it's at the by the Thorntons on Crawfordsville Road. It's the south entrance into Shopping Plaza on the south side. We've had requests, made requests, and finally we've got it on the books and we'll get it done.
Have you seen how that's been drawn up, too, Wendell? Just have you seen how that has been drawn up to go in?
Yes.
So.
It's basically the same turn lane that's to the west of that drive that goes across Thorntons. It gives you a breakdown lane, a slowdown lane to pull. I think we can get three or four cars in there and line them up and then they'll cross.
I guess the reason part of my question is that shortly right behind that is then the lane to turn in.
To Kohl's.
To Kohl's if you're headed east.
Yes.
And that turn lane is horrible and is really bad condition. So I don't know if they can.
The pavement is.
Yes.
And my next thing will make you smile and help you out.
Jump ahead.
I know. Just figured it could all be part of one thing, so.
Yeah. Indy DPW gave me a call last week and I think Jacob was aware of it. They're going to let contracts in March to do Crawfordsville Road from Cunningham back to probably the McDonald's Marsh Old Marsh Plaza entrance. They're going to do a milling and repave and a lot of different work out through there, which is ADA, looking at the signals and everything else. And that will run from Cunningham area all the way to the roundabout. So that's something we've been requesting for a number of years and finally they got it on their book. The other thing is they will work on 16th Street from the roundabout all the way to Lafayette Road, doing the same milling and paving and looking at our ADA compliant and everything else through there. So that that's going to help us out on that Kohl's turn because that will be involved in the project. So we should, once engineering gets that all together, city is going to share back with me for our input, our corrections or anything. So hopefully we can get this bid by March and go to work on that.
Yeah. Appreciate the work that you and others in our town, Jacob, and others do to stay connected to MPO as well as DPW downtown with city county. A concern I have similar to Eileen is or maybe my own concern, but similar that if you're coming out of the exit from the shopping center next to Thorntons, making a left there, you're really you're challenged and it's not, in my opinion, very safe. I'm not the professional, so that's not a statement of liability. But it's a real concern already. If we're going to have a turn lane coming from the, let's say, the east that turns people into and some people do turn there today, most don't, I think because the turn lane's not there. But it seems like at some point we need to make a decision on whether there should be left turns coming out of that shopping center. It's not our property, I understand that, but we we work pretty closely with them. We have our own offices there. Is there any discussion along those lines?
Yes, there is. Me and Jacob worked with the MPO. We have a steady grant that goes from 22nd Street to Cunningham Road, working with Brickspore. We're looking at a lot of different options through there if it needs to be singleized or if we need to do some signage that there's not a left turn or a right turn or whatever that benefits the public getting in and out there safely. So our study starts this month and we have a time period to get that done and report back. And off of those recommendations in that study, we will start working with city and everybody else to see what we can get accomplished there.
What about sidewalks in some of that area? There are I have seen multiple times in the at the light there by Arby's and stuff, couple blind people, another lady, you know, walk into the bus stop and there's literally no sidewalks in.
And that's been my conversation with DPW is we need to look at all these things, address our crosswalks because we are a walking district with our schools. We have shopping areas on both sides of Crawfordsville Road, so I've requested them to take a hard look at it and see if we can make some improvements out through there because our crosswalks at Cunningham alone are non-existent.
Right.
So we're requesting improvements. And the group that we work with downtown, once they get their engineers looked at and walked through, then we'll review the plans also and see if we can have some input.
Okay.
Well, we'll have input, but.
I appreciate everything you presented. You do a great job with that. The general public may, you know, we repeat this seems like at least once or twice a year, but there are certain roads and streets in the town that are actually cared for, the property of the city and the county, Crawfordsville Road being one of those.
Yes.
16th, et cetera. So improvements that are made are really their responsibility and to some level or maybe all most level of the liability because of those those kinds of issues that Eileen brought out. But I think, you know, you only have one chance to make an improvement while improvements are being made. Yeah, we can go back and spend money later or the county can, but we sure ought to push for everything we can.
Right. And that's our goal is to try and make this the worthwhile project. I mean, it's worthwhile right now, but we want to make those additional improvements. We've identified, we've had conversations. Hopefully their funding, their resources will help us get that done.
Thank you.
And just the last thing, we're working on our 2019 projects for the milling and repaving, ADA curb ramp improvements. So we have a lot of different things going on and it's going to be another great positive busy 2019. Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Wendell.
Thank you.
And thank you guys for us, too. This is a time of year that's it's got to be the most difficult, so thank you. Next up, Parks and Recreation, Tammy Smith.
Good evening. First of all, I want to give an update on the trees. I'm excited to say that Mike and Jacob in the Parks Department have worked really hard and they've got all the stakes and plaques in the ground with the trees. So if people who have gotten a tree haven't heard from me yet, they will be this week to let them know exactly where their tree is located. So I encourage people to go out and take a look. The plaques are really nice. Indiana Memorial did those for us and they did a really good job. This upcoming year, we're going to update the plaques that were already in the ground to be uniform with those, so we'll put new plaques on the trees that were done the previous three years. I'm also working on a little map to map out where the trees are so we can give that to people who might want to see if they want to do a little walkthrough on the parks and maybe see a little bit of the history of some of the trees and the people that have trees in our parks, so excited about that. I wanted to thank our parent volunteers on our basketball league. We had a little issue last weekend and I just want to remind everybody that the coaches on these leagues are parent volunteers and they do an absolute phenomenal job. And if it wasn't for the volunteers, like so many other groups in Speedway, we couldn't have these leagues. But I wanted to personally thank them for all of their hard work because I surely couldn't run a basketball league myself, so it's nice to have them and I wanted to recognize them for that. Then I also wanted to announce that on February 2nd, the Parks Department is going to be holding a Winter Wonderland Prince and Princess Ball. It'll be held at the high school cafeteria, so we're real excited about that. It's going to be done kind of on the premise of a father-daughter dance or mother-son. It's for all ages, though, so we're real excited about it and hope a lot of people will come out and join other Speedway royalty and have a good fun afternoon. You know, socializing and dancing and having some refreshments. That's all I have.
Excellent. Any other questions? Anyone? Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Item number 12 is a report from our town manager, Jacob.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I want to mention that we're doing yard waste pickup for one more week this week. Can't believe Wendell didn't mention it. Can't believe Wendell didn't mention it as part of his update. So, we had, as we sometimes do in Indiana, we kind of just skipped that nice fall, and we just went from summer into winter pretty abruptly, so there's a lot of trees with leaves. Got a lot of comments and feedback to extend it another week, and, and so we're doing that. I, I do just want to comment, because that kind of raises, well, why don't we just do it year-round? Why do we ever stop? And, and so, the reason for that is that the same group of folks that we ask to pick up the yard waste are the same group of folks who, we also ask to hop on a truck at midnight and keep working until eight o'clock in the morning so that they can clear snow and we can all get in, into work, and trucks can get around and all that. So, that's what makes it difficult in the winter, is that it's that same group of employees, and, and if you have a snow event, it makes it, you really can't then pick up yard waste and make it very erratic. I will say, though, that we do still do the Christmas tree pickup, the first week of January, which this year it won't be on Tuesday, that would be the following week, because that would, otherwise that would be New Year's Day. If you have yard waste out at that time, that'll get picked up along with a tree, or you just put your yard waste out then. So, we do do a couple of little runs in there, and just want folks to be aware that, that those options exist, because we do know there are certain types of trees. I don't know enough about trees and what does what, but I know that some kind of hold on for, for longer than others, so just want folks to be aware of that.
You should have seen the look Wendell gave you when you...
Yeah, he's...
More pickup.
He's pretty excited about it. Like I said, I'm surprised it wasn't part of his update, but, and actually, Council President Matthews, appreciate you telling him to thank the guys, because it, it does get pretty busy this time of year, and that's why we scale some of these services back. Couple of other updates, as some folks have noticed, we posted it on the website but also on LinkedIn, we are in the process of hiring a communications director for the town. It has generated, I'm happy to say, quite a bit of interest, over seventy applicants. Communications continues to be a priority for myself as well as council, and we want to make sure that that is, that we're getting the right communication out, the right information out quickly and efficiently, and across the many mediums that people like to receive their information, so we will have somebody dedicated to that. Not committing on exactly when that position will be hired, as I said, a lot of applicants, but happy that folks are interested in working for the town, they're certainly not interested in working for me, so that says a lot of good things about the town. And then, last, I just wanted to mention, last meeting I had the pleasure of, of announcing that we had acquired the PNC building, no longer the PNC building, they've officially moved out, and they're at their new location on the, on the west side of town. And no sooner did I announce that, that people were asking, well, when do, when is everything going to be done, you guys are moving in? There's just no, there's no rest. But, we, we're also very excited to dive into that project, so we have already started the process of selecting an architect, and just so folks are aware, because I know people want to know, we, and I'm probably going to regret saying this on a recording, but, but the hope is, the tentative plan, this is a construction project, but the hope is to be in there late summer, early fall of 2020. So, that's the plan, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Jacob. Next report from our town attorney and his festive tie, Bob Clutter.
Festive tie, yes, that's, that's the extent of my report.
I like that.
Merry Christmas.
Thanks, Bob. Next up, report from our council members, Eileen Fisher.
Just want to thank the volunteers that do all the extra work on our boards and commissions. It is volunteer work, it's your time, and, but yet you're helping us, and it is making our town better together. So, thank you for all of your hard work. Thank you to all of our employees that work hard as well, police, fire, street, everyone, and happy holidays. That's all I got.
Thank you, Eileen. Next up, Councilor Gary Rakes.
I, too, would, would like to thank all of our employees. You know, we, we approved a couple of agreements between police and fire, but we also approved the salary ordinance that included increases in pay. Actually read last week in the paper and different things online, that they're, even in the strong economy that we've been having, there, there are communities right here in our own state, right here in central Indiana, that are not able to give raises and other compensation. So, we're appreciative of the fact that we've continued to, to move our, our community forward, and I'm talking about we as in the world, we, everyone in this town that serves in different ways. But in particular, the police, fire, our public works, and our administrative help, I'm just pleased that we could, could do that and, and guarantee that, you know, that agreement for a few years, to, so it kind of takes it off the, the shelf and allows everybody to focus on what's going forward. And I thank the fellow councilors that, that helped to, to make that happen as well, not to mention our Jacob and, and his staff. Secondly, I want to remind Monty that St. Elmo's is open late on Mondays, and I'm sure that Betsy would appreciate that. That's it.
Thank you, Gary. Vice President David Lindsay.
Wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. We'll see you on YouTube and TV in a couple of weeks, but for those that won't be here, although I hear the police chief wants to come back, but I think we'll give him a pass. That's all I have.
What he was just talking about.
Thank you, Dave. The only thing that I've got is that our last meeting of 2018 will be Wednesday, the twenty-sixth, so we've moved it back, obviously, for Christmas holiday. So, Wednesday, the twenty-sixth, I hope to see all of you here.
Is it an hour earlier?
And it will be an hour earlier as well, too, so, six o'clock, yes. So, with that, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, I call this meeting adjourned at seven fifty-six.[1760.28][1760.28]